...begin for them the day after graduation. They've been immersing themselves in it as time goes on. We want to remind folks that part of the secret sauce in our shops in the lower left is kids are graduating with industry credentials. And these are just the other campus, certified nursing assistance, cybersecurity certificates, served safe sanitation. Many cosmetology students graduate with their state board license. And for those of you that are casually aware of Oakdale, you know that we've... Part of our modeling is that they have a lot of contact time in the shops. So we are able to get a bit deeper. And then in the lower right, we want to always, we want to be able to celebrate. We love municipal projects. We really, it's, there's just nothing better than to be able to show an immediate return on investment. I live in Hanson, I live in the district. I like to see that too. We just saved Christmas in Hanson some big fiberglass Santa Claus that got knocked over and the kids in automotive polished it up, so that, now that looks great. So we're thrilled when our towns seek our help. The kids do find it very, very meaningful. So there's a lot going on at our school that we love to talk about. So in terms of the building project, again, just to orient you, Webster Street 123 is at the bottom of the screen. That's where we're going to build this thing. That's our football field on the left, our baseball field on the right, and that's the existing campus there in the front. In this slide, Webster Street's at the top of the, it's at the top of the screen. This is really in address to show you that we're on a very limited site and we took a long time to study various options. So the best buildable zone we had was, as you can see there in the center of the slide. That was where the ball fields in the back. Here's another rendering of what this would look like from a future drone. When it's built, parking in the middle and the ball fields and Webster Street are at the top of the, the top of the slide. We're going with a bit of a farmhouse theme to match the, to match how the architecture is in, in North Hanover. So this is a rendering of what the front of the school would look like. And another aerial projection of what it would look like. And the next one is just a little bit closer on the side here. When you see a design like this with this very long section here, first floor shops, I'll show you a few pictures in just a second. The second and third floor are partial third floors. This is not an overbuilt building. This is not a building with a lot of unnecessary space. The designers did a nice job.
Excuse me, is that, is that really all that open space behind it? Is that true of size and shape?
Yeah, good question. These trees are legit. That's the tree line where the wetlands are. Behind it, not as after it. It's Dillingham Way in Hanover residential, a residential road. I wish, I wish.
Yeah, no, I was just surprised.
Yes, it's not sprawling farmland.
Usually they have to let in.
Yes, that's right, that's right. So here's the first floor. Anything that you see in kind of a light blue color is, is a shop. And so most of our shops are on the first floor. You can imagine, you don't design an automotive shop on the second floor. Yes. The front of the school is at the top, so Webster Street's at the top of the slide. So you have your restaurant, our restaurant, our salon, and veterinary science greeting the public on the front. From a, from a school building administration point of view, one of the items I don't spend a lot of time talking about, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, is that this puts a 21st century focus on building security, having a centralized entrance for all, for the public access, especially with the restaurant and the salon. So that's a very important feature for this as well. But you can see automotive, plumbing, HVAC, port culture with an attached greenhouse, carpentry, metal fab. MET is our manufacturing shop. We'll have a dining, an open dining area. This auditorium we have is kind of neat. It's a multi-purpose auditorium. I'll show you a couple of pictures of that. And on the second floor, again, not a ton of space, we have our gymnasium on the second floor. Just not enough horizontal space off the ground level to accommodate. But as we go from first floor to third floor, this looks a little bit more traditional. It's a partial second floor, classrooms, science labs that, again, one of, someone asked me, could you take more kids? What's your biggest pinch point? It's our science labs. We've got five science labs that are about 750 square feet and we literally can't fit any more freshmen in biology or physics classes. So that, that alone is a game changer.
Can I ask?
Yes, certainly.
So all the space where it's saying roof below is all open, would you have the ability to expand if we'd be down the road on top of those roofs or would they all have to be redone with, you know, whatever you call the stringers or whatever, you know what I mean?
I do. Our architects say this is, this is pretty much the max. So the roof below area, we would anticipate solar panels. At the very least, we might afford to do some vegetated roof because I don't want to be staring down onto a white roof and blinding myself. So they've advised us about that. But they have addressed that question, could there be further expansion? And they, they're just hesitant to say that that would be, that that would be possible. So I'm going to, the short answer is it would be no, in terms of, in that way. And the roofs that you see, thank you for pointing that out, those, that's, those are all those first floor shops with those high ceilings. And I think that was, that's also part of it as well, the ceiling heights, the roof heights might be unusual based on the fact that the first floor is mostly shops. Yeah, and the third floor, again, a partial third floor and the electrical shop, electrical program is our most populated program. They need a high bay, a high ceiling rather, and so, so we put them near a freight elevator and that made them happy because you can't do the scissor lifts on the stairs, you know, replace hulls. So we took care of them on the third floor, but we just could not, we could not fit them on the, we could not fit them on the first floor. And now here are some pretty pictures. They all, they're all made to look very pretty, aren't they? Student commons. This multi-purpose auditorium is great. It's not going to hold the whole school. It's, uh, those seats are retractable, they can be pushed back. So this is the drama club, yep. The wrestling team practice after school, absolutely. Horticulture's going to bring the John Deere tractors in for a demonstration, totally. This is going to get used as much, almost as much as the cafeteria. And part of what we have to show residents is that when we are asking for common space, which we are in dire need of, we need to make sure we're designing common space that is going to not be low frequency common space because the MSBA has caps on what they will reimburse for. And so we're very mindful, we are, we're very mindful of the, the gap between eligible reimbursement and actual reimbursement, which I can get into those numbers a little bit. Very proud of the, the, the delta between the actual and the, the eligible and actual reimbursement is, is about a 20-point drop, which is actually pretty good for a Volk school because the state does not, the state reimburses us at the same rate as any other kind of school, which is, which is unfortunate. And it is something we, we continue to advocate for. All I'm asking is that if I could wait by one, the state would have a rate of reimbursement at least for the shop space. You don't have to give me extra money for the auditorium, but you should throw in a little extra money for an automotive shop and take some of the pressure off of, of the locals. But I think we've done well, given, you know, given the hand we've been dealt. And $111 million is okay too. Gymnasium on the second floor, pretty traditional, you know, fun fact, a standard gymnasium size is 12,000 square feet. I did not know that. Ours right now is about 8,000 square feet, so this will allow us a little more capacity. And now I'm going to just quickly run you through some imagery of what do all of the, what did all those light blue squares, all those shops I mentioned? So this, these are some renderings. Manufacturing, engineering tech, it's what we would call machine shop back in the day. Metal fabrication and welding, you can get a theme here. Plenty of space and elbow room for the kids, booth work and horizontal table work. Allied Health, this is what would be one half of the shop for the underclassmen, upperclassmen on the other half. Automotive. The automotive shop today is the same automotive shop from 1962. This has more bays, plans for electric vehicles, diagnostic bays, and it's on the corner of the first floor, so it allows for cars to easily come in and out as the automotive shop also offers services to the public for, for car repair. If you didn't know that, give us a call because as long as you don't need it back like in an hour. So if you need a ride home, we can, we can help you out. Carpentry program, again, just, just the image of seeing mock buildings is, is like a, a totally new concept, given the lack of space we have. If we didn't have an off-campus program, if we didn't have an off-campus building program, which is why we love municipal projects, we would have to cut the number of kids being put into carpentry. If we needed all of our juniors and all of our freshmen to be in the current carpentry footprint, wouldn't work. So whether they go on co-op or not, we've had great support and mutual interest from our community saying, hey, we need this built, we need this repaired, a ramp, a shed, something bigger than that. So our juniors and seniors in carpentry are off campus. We've come to rely on that over the decades and it's a hallmark of the program. So it's, we're not disappointed in it, but we know that all of these shops will have more space. Computer information technology, cosmetology, this will be a first floor program. Design visual communications. Electrical. You see something, you see that second floor again, these are younger kids in grade nine and 10 do a lot of booth work. They get out, they, they have, they do stock lists, schematic, they have schematic rooms and then they have to wire something and then it gets checked by the teacher. And when they're juniors and seniors, they're doing more flexible work around the building. Although I don't know what electrical is going to do for the first few years of this new building. It's a nice problem to have. I'm not sure what we'll do, we'll figure that, we'll figure that out. Horticulture, landscape instruction. This is, this picture is a reflection of the, a lot of the kids, today, kids do a lot of floriculture work at the tables, but there'll be an adjacent greenhouse and horticulture's curriculum is the campus as well. HVAC, veterinary science. Yep. Fifi will be on one of the tables in the back, in the room there. And, and plumbing, which will be next to HVAC. The one picture I don't have to show you at the moment is culinary arts. They're doing a 3D rendering. So that, that is the one of the 14 programs that I don't have to show to them. Picture, restaurant and kids. Dinner. Stop here. Anything I can look back on, either the numbers that we started with or any of those slides?
Yeah. Apologies.
No apologies.
I had an naive question, but it seems like the lot's pretty big. If you expand horizontally more into the second floor, some of those stations that I gave you.
Yeah. I think we, to, to the earlier question, I think we could expand. What we would have to trade off is we have to reload, we have to find a location for our buses, like Situ, if we own our own buses, we employ our own bus drivers. And it has been, building project or not, it's been a conversation. So I would need to find a place that we could put our buses, that could be secure and have facilities for, for the employees. If we could solve that and eliminate, and eliminate the need to house buses, we would have competing demands with, how many students will we allow to have cars on campus? But I would say right out of the gate, if we didn't have, the way we designed it, we're going to park our buses ju- right near the automotive shop, which was on the, the first floor on the, on the east side of the, of the school. So what the architect would say is if you didn't have so many competing demands on, on the campus, you probably could. What they're saying is that how cost effective would it be to expand? What would we be expanding it for? But is there space there?
First floor, you know, if you have them on the first floor, probably my estimation would be a deal.
That was on our, yes, and electrical on the first floor as well. And then what happened is we, we, we would then have to probably have a lower enrollment. Honestly translated into a small, the common spaces, so yeah, that's where we landed. We'll, we'll see how far off the mark we are. But no, that's not an naive question at all because, you know, we're trying to fit the size 10 foot and the size 8 shoe ever here. Okay. Quick question. Please. Hi. Which, which programs are you seeing the most increase in demand and which ones are you seeing sort of decreasing demand? I, I don't see decreasing demand, but I'll, I'll answer it this way. The skilled trades, construction, manufacturing, and automotive are without a doubt the programs with, with the highest consistent demand. We just placed our current ninth graders in their shops. Electrical, metal fab welding, carpentry, HVAC, automotive, solid, solid numbers. There's not a program that we offer that, that I think isn't, if there was a program that we offered that wasn't meeting a labor market demand and wasn't attracting students consistently, that would be up for review and possible modification or closure. And that is, and that is something, that's a reality that we have to, we have an obligation to make sure that we're not running programs just to fill space. So, but if I, but if you were to ask me of the 180 students that we take in the freshman class, what I learned from my guidance director yesterday is that 92% of the freshman class got either their first or second choice after explore, they have to explore all 12 and then they get to request, we, and we score them. But in terms of where the demand is, I'm, I'm seeing it consistently in those programs and then I'm seeing it reliable. We also accept 10th graders, which is something in the last five years that has made a difference. It's shown greater, it, our attrition number has diminished a bit because we can admit someone in grade 10. We, we're a public school, so it's not like, oh, you, you had to catch the fever in seventh grade, this is the only time you can do it. So we have brought in successful kid, kids who are successful in grade 10, they come in know, they don't explore anything, they come in knowing what they want. And so if we have programs where there is space in nine and grade 10 or 11, that's an opportunity for students as well.
I have a question.
Please.
So you're adding potentially vets and veterinary programs and employing. Do you have like a list behind that? Because I mean, you're building this school for now, but it's hopefully the lifespan is going to be, what, 30 years, 35, 30 years? So you've got to think that there's going to be more, maybe projected out like what would be possibly, you'd be needing to service like, like cyber, cybersecurity type stuff. Building management, Mass Maritime has this awesome new program where they're building emergency man, that you don't see in a lot of different schools, but I would think that has the same feel, it's something that you guys could, could train for, you know, the school so long. Or are you planning on having these same 25 pro, 20, 15 programs you have now in 2015?
We would be, it would be wrong to say that every program would stay the same for the next 50 years. It's just not, it's not an honest answer. We have to evaluate, is there student interest? If you build it, will they come? And is there a viable economic market for them to go into? When we went to Department of Ed a year and a half ago, looking at possible programs, we included more on the list than plumbing and veterinary science. And quite honestly, we could have made an argument for four or five programs. But if I was putting down a dollar right now, I would tell you that the next possible program that could be open would be an early childhood education program. We purchased a ranch house next to the school a year plus ago. We moved the district offices, we, we are using that property for district offices. It was, it was a good move because when the architects laid out the site plan, they ran out of space. And so the actual exit to the school is actually going to be closer to this district office. Why do I mention the district office? Because I think at some point in the future, we could collapse the district office back into the school at some point down the road and possibly use that house as a potential early childhood education area. It's an interesting idea. It requires considerable, considerable study. But I'll tell you this, the reason that we jumped on the opportunity to purchase the house next door is because central office administration space is not reimbursable through MSBA. So we were able to cut 2,000 square feet out of this high school, which would have had to have been spaced for gym, for me, for human resources, for IT, because MSBA's modeling, I don't blame them, but their modeling is they assume K to 12 districts have a central office building somewhere else and not embedded in a school, which for so many reasons, including reminding administrators why we got into education in the first place, would be a lovely idea to have it all baked in. So we made a tra- a targeted decision. Now I get to say that in answering your question because now I don't have to mess with the plan, but I think the, obviously, if you were to go back to our yearbooks from the 60s to now, there, there was painting and wall finishing. There was marine technology, which left in the 80s and now is coming back in some shops. So I think ultimately, we might have one play at doing something extra that doesn't mess with that design. Otherwise, we'd have to figure out some trade-offs or take your cybersecurity idea and we flush that out in our computer info tech program or take a mass maritime program. I'll give you another one, fire science. First responders. The state does not, the state of Massachusetts, there's no blame here, but we've been talking about this, the state has no statewide curriculum for high school age kids in fire science. But area fire chiefs are running a fire cadet program at our school after hours. We've got a little bit of state money, they, they, they teach the class, we bring in kids as an exploratory program because fire chiefs are saying, where are they? And if we send them to the academy, they don't want to stay. So there are other key occupations that aren't aligned with state curriculum. There are only certain industries that there's a state curriculum. I hope that changes in the next, that would be a game changer at Volk schools in Massachusetts if they ever did that.
So sorry to delay this, but I guess my question was, do you feel like the current proposal you have is flexible enough to switch from one program to another?
I do. If you want to look at just the guts of it, we've got 11 shops on the first floor with high ceilings and bays. We've got, and we've got one on the third floor, we've got three on the second floor. If we, if, if things changed over time, yes, absolutely. That's, that's what we could, that flexibility is there. Hi.
Hi. Is the greenhouse square footage reimbursable?
Yeah, it is. It's all, it's considered instructional space. It's attached to the building, which I think that was a, that, that was part of making sure, but we have a greenhouse right now that is not attached to the building. It's better supervision that they were able to lay out horticulture in their location. Will, the kids will end up, I'll mention about value engineering quickly later, but our kids will build outbuildings on this property after the fact because horticulture's going to need to have outbuildings to store all their toys, to take care of the fields. But if they can have a home base with enough space, with the picture I showed, with that attached greenhouse, that will be a game changer for them. Hortica, our horticulture students scored second in the nation in Indianapolis this past October in the Future Farmers of America competition, second in the nation for nursery landscape. This is a program that's only been on the books for seven years, so it is now one of our most popular programs. It's, it's quite a remarkable story, so thank you for asking. That's an easy one to do the drag of. The next several slides offer a quick commentary of how did you get to new? I think we know that, I think you know what the talking points are for. Why wouldn't you renovate a 1962 building? Why would you build new? But these were the challenges we had. How do you address the waiting list and limited space? There are programs that we're not offering yet that we should be. A building of a certain vintage didn't take certain security measures into mind, we need to improve upon that. When we studied the cost of adrenno, there were some adrenno models that were more expensive than brand new. And again, if you do, if you do a renovation, it doesn't guarantee that everything is upgraded. But we looked at it very carefully. We actually took more time than we intended to make sure that we truly understood the, the cost benefit of saying that new is better. And I have a few slides to just illustrate that a bit more. I'm not going to read this to you, why not an adrenno? It doesn't meet our goals. How do you, I don't, I don't, I joke about this, but I've never seen a modular classroom that's called carpentry shop. So I don't know how you renovate a fully occupied building. It would take five years, 6% cost escalation. What you would have thought is cheaper isn't really cheaper as those, those value less expenses, like we're going to rent modules for $10 million and then turn them back. Anyway, when all the numbers added up, it seemed very clear to us that new and 900 was the, was the best option. This was not perfect. This is a very dense slide. So now the base model, the stuff that MSBA doesn't even care about because they're not going to give you a penny is, well, what if you just upgrade what you have, bring everything up to code? If you had to have a code upgrade. I do have people asking me, what if this project fails, what is your plan B? And the only plan B we have would be to do a code upgrade to renovate what we have. And basically what this slide says is all the reasons why that's a, that's a stinky idea. What does a code upgrade do and not do? We can't add new programs, we probably have to shrink enrollment, it's going to take five years, similar to the adrenno complaining that I just did. But in this case, there's actually, you know, in the upper right corner, a, a code upgrade, if you do more than 30% renovation to a building over a three-year period, you have to bring the whole building up to code. So as we bring to our voters a $162 million financed project, Plan B, which I'll show you in a moment, is probably $140 million of a, of a bundle. Because I said to the project team, okay, let's talk about this Plan B. Can I do things in chunks? What if I have to do it in chunks? Yeah, Tom, if you, you don't have sprinklers in the 1962 building. Right. So what are you going to do about the ceilings? What are you going to do about the ventilation? You're going to do one thing and then stop and then do the other? Oh, okay, I get it. So in other words, we're going to have to come back and have a revised model, spending a little bit less and offering a lot less. That's what a code upgrade would do. And this chart is a better job than the other slide, but if you want to read the other slide. You can read across one line at a time. So the biggest, fattest, top number is 276 million for this school. We financed the feasibility, that shaved off a couple million. The state will throw in 111 and I've got us at about 162 for the, you know, which includes escalation. Slide right across and you'll see, if we only got to do Plan B code upgrade, the sky won't fall. I do not want you to hear me say, please, that it's a fait accompli and the day that this project doesn't pass, the entire building will implode upon itself. That is not going to happen. It, we won't, we're not going to let that happen. But if I do end up in front of you dodging rotten fruit because I'm now coming back asking for $140 million debt authorization, for what? What brand show will I show you? I'll say, I can't do everything I want to renovate, no new programming, and if you bring stuff up to code, no new comment spaces, so. So we, it is, it's, it's a thoughtful comment that I'm making that we definitely have looked into it. It would take 60-plus months to do a full renovate, to, to do a code upgrade while the kids are in the building, et cetera, et cetera. It does, it doesn't meet our needs. We want people to know that we've, we've looked at every possible option when arriving at this. We didn't just start in the middle of the movie. Where, where do I get to check the new box? We didn't do that.
Is escalation increasing students or is that the cost?
Cost escalation, that's right. So we did factor cost escalation into both, into both models when, when we did this. I said to the project team, you've got to do, you've got to show folks apples to apples. So dollar for dollar, there would be fewer dollars. What the taxpayers would be spending their money on would be far less. And then I said, as I said to school community members, if we had to go to Plan B, we'll never be able to come back in our lifetimes for anything else. Once you start down the road of, of going to Plan B, of just doing the code upgrades. So I don't want to dwell on that, but we have, but I need you to, I need you to know that we definitely have looked into this so that we're measuring the value based on, eventually a 1962 building needs repairs, where do we want to place our bets on investing, on investing our money? But at the same time, there's no threat, there's no immediate concern, there's no like something's immediately a crisis or a problem. That would be disingenuous.
But if the code upgrade is keeping the student level?
Probably lower. And I was surprised by that, but the architect said, yeah, Tom, if you upgrade everything up to code, you're probably going to have less space. Like, we have a modular classroom, you all know about modular, I don't know about modular, but we've got a modular classroom. They're all temporary, of course, and ours was put down in the year 2000. So if that modular classroom were to disappear, it has to eventually disappear, so what are we going to do with that? So now I've got two classrooms and, I've got two and a half classrooms and an office in this modular unit. If I'm literally down two and a half classrooms, I either have to build and attach it on there, oh wait, that's more than a code upgrade, or I'm going to lose the equivalent of two classrooms, which right now would, which would eventually trigger a loss of, we wouldn't be able to enroll as many students. I mean, it wouldn't be like hundreds of students, but it would, it certainly wouldn't even be maintaining the same number.
So it's 140 million for less students, 162 million for how many more students?
From 680 to 900. And that 900 is in 85% design capacity. So it's going to be designed for 900, but at some point, could it be more than that? Sure. But I really don't get rah rah about that because I, I tell people, we're not getting to 900 until the towns say they can afford an operating budget that will put us on an escalator. So let's not look at it like a department store escalator that we're going to go from 680 to 900. I think it could take eight years, quite honestly, because I need to hire more everything. And that doesn't happen immediately, but the capacity will be there to go from, so that's an extra 45 to 50 ninth grade students we could admit and place in these larger shops with more capac- with more capacity.
But if I just take it, cost per student, I mean, 140 versus 160, if you gain students, so what, I?
Yes.
I'd do math for you in my head.
Join the club on that. But what we can, what we do know however, is that more students, more state aid. That, that if you have, we know what hold harmless means, if you have a school district that doesn't have an increase in enrollment, the state will not give you less chapter 70 money, but they will give you no additional chapter 70 money until you get out of hold harmless. So every dollar that is increased in the school budget is on the locals.[1751.86] So every dollar that is increased in the school budget is on the locals. There will be no state aid. If, so, so the messaging from our district is, if, if we get this project, it's great to have the capacity, but we, we are fool, we, we cannot think that we, I can't go into a fiscal twenty-nine budget asking for five teachers having already accepted the kiddos. Yeah, I need to know that the capacity is there, so it would probably be a, a one-year lag. But we'll move, we'll move, we'll move accordingly. Could we take a few more kids initially? Absolutely. I mean, I talked about those seven hundred and fifty square foot science labs. I mean, we're going to have science labs that are like regular, nice eleven hundred square. We, we could, we could take more ninth graders without them to add staff, but that will quickly plateau. I, I hope to have that headache. I do. But it's, it's certainly something that, the value there for the sake of, for the sake of, you know, future seats and future capacity, that's where I see that, that you, you raise the number one priority about student enrollment and what we can do.
Yeah, and just thinking about how to buy a constituency, that's key, right? How much is, if you get a, you get, you know, a new building with more students, the cost per student versus the, we have with less students, you sort of make the case for the former, right?
I think you can, I think you can make the case for, you can definitely make the case for the former. Yes, absolutely. This slide here just shows what our project manager said is unusual, and so I, I just wanted to share. Twenty twenty-four was like a series of homework assignments from the preliminary design plan PDP to the preferred schematic report to the SD, the schematic design. The numbers all trended in a, in a ni, in a nice direction. And this was through very careful vetting of the design. Nope, we don't need this. No, we don't need this. You don't need space for the super, so my, my office is not in this new school. It's in that building we described, talking about early childhood. So we were able to bring those numbers down to, to what I've already started to explain to you. But again, this, these numbers are important because oftentimes, and I'm not, I, I, I didn't pay too much attention to other building projects in our region, but what I was told is that oftentimes it could go in the other direction, not just because of inflation, but because of design changes. So we stuck to a, we stuck to a modest plan that isn't, that wasn't so short-sighted that it's going to be too small on day one. But I'm happy that the numbers trended in that direction.
What's within the fifty-three million that's not construction? Is it engineering design?
Soft costs, engineering design, furniture, furniture, furniture and equipment is another big, is another big element, so that's, that's correct. Yep. Contingent, and contingency, which is a standard five or six percent, I think you've got a construction contingency and an owner's contingency as well. So we're, we are, we are, as, as it should, as every school building project should, this assumes we're spending every penny of the contingency money, right? Because you have to do that. Because nobody has a crystal ball until you get that building out of the ground and see what else you're going to do. So all of that is stat doing.
What, what, um, what, uh, how much is the field, like, the project field?
How much money out or?
Of that budget it is for, is that not?
All included, yes.
Do you know what the rough numbers?
I could, I could, I do not have it off the top of my head. The only thing that I'm triggered to is saying is, they have a very low per square foot cap, like, there's a cap on, it might be ten percent of the overall project. Or they, they might put it, I think they put it under a bucket of site costs. It might, it might be ten percent. The plan of the fields you saw in the earlier slides is that, um, we, we, we're carrying dollars for an, um, um, artificial turf on, on the football soccer lacrosse field and natural fields for baseball and softball. That's the, that's the plan right now.
Can I ask a question about the field?
Please.
It looks like the, uh, so the, the new building will be built behind the current building, which is currently where the fields are. During the building process, will there be access to fields for any of the students or?
We will be the visiting team. For a while. And we'll be calling upon our friends in area communities to, you don't have to put a Viking at the center of the, you know, the field or anything. But truly, that, that's what's going to, that is what's going to happen for, yeah, for a few years. And then I guess you have to grow the grass too, so, you know, it'll be, but, but we, we know that we have partners that will, that will assist with that. But that is one of those sacrifices. That one day graduates will say, when I was there, I was, I, we didn't have a home game for three years. Yes, I, I do feel badly already about, about that. Uh, again, just another brag sheer of what went into this hundred and eleven million dollar plan. How did we, how did we squeeze as much out of the state as we possibly could? A lot of these things appear, um, in other building project documents. This first one, I didn't know what grossing factor was. What's grossing factor? And why do I have a score of one point four four? That's the percentage of the space in the building that has nothing to do with instruction, and the MSBA won't allow a design where that is more than one point five. So that number, I would have just glazed over that number, but the team said, that's actually remarkable. Like, that, now, that doesn't impress me seeing that this, but the more they talked and it sounded good, so I, I said, well, then we have to tell people that this is a reflection of, like, when they actually measured all the square footage that, about what the hallways, the room closets, the bathrooms, the non-instructional space, that says it's a tighter design, fewer square feet, fewer dollars per square foot, lower cost. We've got a real, we got a, we got an attaboy on our ma, on the maintenance incentive. This is true on all schools. You can get up to two percentage points for reimbursement for documented good maintenance practices. My team said that they hadn't seen anything over one point seven. We got one point eight one, so that's done on the fridge at home, you know? That's like a big deal that it, that they, they noted that we take care of buildings. And so we were able to add that into the reimbursement rate. The biggest surprise was number three. We did not expect that the state would acknowledge that we added a ninth town to our district because their regulations say that there is an incentive for expanded regions if they're being created from nothing. So what did we do? Well, we're an established region. We added a community to help cost share and give another community access, a very obvious trade-off. And so we were pleasantly surprised that the MSBA added one point zero five percent of reimbursable money because we added a town to our district. And then the other two are, you know, are green incentives, which, uh, when we factored that in, we come up with, uh, that hundred and eleven million dollars. So we're, we're, we're proud of, we're proud of being in a, positioning ourselves. But I'm actually probably more proud of this box on the left, which is all the stuff that I got to say when I sat on that, I was on that eight-hour Zoom with three sets of estimators, and we're going to go through every line, and we're going to call out this, we're going to have allowances for this, blah, blah, blah. And we got to take out a bunch of stuff because the kids would be able to do it. And I think it, you know, I, I was keeping, you know, I was writing down on a notepad, it, you know, it almost felt like it was, oh yeah, the concession stand, now we'll do that. Oh, the press party, we'll do that. We need bike racks, we'll do that. Cubbies for the kids to put their backpacks in when they come into class, so. So I, I probably got up to seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars of stuff that would have stayed on the finance list of things. We don't, we can have horticulture plant stuff. When we're done and we're buttoning up and the parking lot's done, we're going to plant all these lovely cherry trees, whatever they're going to do. So what a great return on investment to be able to say to the estimators, take that out, cut that down, you know, we can handle that. And then the, and then the other box on the right, again, there are some obvious errors. This doesn't matter as much to me because whatever number we land at is still very big. So, you know, you, I don't think there's a lot of like, oh, wonderful, you went from like a bajillion dollars down to two hundred and seventy-six million. But we did carefully try to value engineer some stuff in advance, including the space savings I mentioned for the district offices. So that all helps to contribute to a number. We're projecting this cost at eight hundred and eighty-one dollars a square foot. The last twelve high schools that were done from twenty nineteen to the present had an average high school square footage cost of nine hundred and eight. So I'm always looking, I'm always looking at pressure tests as to what we're doing against other trends. I don't need to be the best. I don't want to be some outlier that says, why didn't we think of efficiencies? So when they say, yeah, Tom, we look back, we looked at the last dozen or so high schools that were funded, you seem to be clocking in right now a, a little bit below the average. I'll take that, especially as a Oak School. I think that's a good position to be in. Oh my goodness, this must be we're nearing the end. I recognize this slide. So here we are again, all of what you just saw, beginning and end. We're not sure how we're going to finance it, but we do want to model it for folks, and this is the group of folks in town that need to see where our head is. And you have a great financial team here in the city that will crunch numbers. And I, I really enjoyed working with Jim and Nancy and all of you on, on, on supporting our school and, and giving us good feedback. You're, you're, um, you're wonderful at what you do. Here's just a visual of what I, this is just added bonus slide of watch the number go down. So, you know, the sand-colored thing is level debt right across. And, and the downward slide is what it would look like if we some, if we said we're going to finance it with all the assumptions I mentioned, level, level principal. And with that, oh yeah, last slide here. Uh, here are the polling places for our towns, so the election will be in the high school gym here in the city. And, uh, just, I'm, I'm keeping score on the left here. Uh, thank you again for your, your support, your support on November eighteenth. We did secure the six towns, uh, for that regional agreement amendment. You might recall that being under warrants. We had capacity in Hanover's town meetings last night. So that regional agreement amendment will, will, is, is considered adopted at the local level. Uh, we'll go to Norwell and Marshall as well, and then we'll go to the commissioner of education. And it's not seven thirty, wow. Can I go back to anything?
Yeah, question.
Yes.
Um, and I think, I mentioned this, but I can, so we have the cost, um, to the, um, for the new build. What's the cost for the code upgrade for?
I haven't done that analysis. I, I was starting to say, all right, take one, you know, take one sixty-two, create a, create a decimal of one forty over one sixty-two. Apply it to this and, and, and see how, I, I have not done that, but if I were to do that.
We can just do a ratio, I assume that's.
I think so.
It'll be all over, but it's going to be.
Yeah. The bar, I mean, I asked the project team about it, you know, the cash flow, we would probably use the same cash flow. What would happen is we'd have to call a timeout. We'd probably need another year. I'd have to use that stabilization money. I'd have to go back and hire OPM and a designer. We'd have to come up with a bundle and then bring it forward again. So the cost escalation might be even off by a year. That one forty could creep up. It depends on how aggressive we could be, uh, with that. But that's how I would do it, you know, kind of back of the nap.
Well, I'm just thinking about people that go to vote, kind of want to know the number of, hey, this is the new school, this is the two, yeah, funding things, and this is the code upgrade, right? It's obviously going to be less, and we understand that.
But we think, that's right.
We, we, we think. Actually, I understand you can't really, you know, that number down, you've got to go back and do all that stuff. I'm just thinking that that's a question.
But we need to, we need to show people the floor. We need to show people that we've, here, we can, we can pinpoint this. And that's why we're, that's why we want to share these numbers, so that people know that the delta between what we can do for the next fifty years and what would be a half measure at best. But, you know, the, the dollars, I think, would not.
But that Plan B, would you have to come back again and do another vote?
I'd be standing right at this podium, talking about how we're going to ask nine towns to vote on a hundred and, huh, 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 a couple million dollars to do all the things we couldn't do in just the code upgrade.
So what's Plan C?
Call mass teacher retirement system. And see where I am on the retirement chart.
We're sort of Plan A.
Plan, plan, I mean, that, that's Plan B, C and beyond, yeah.
On a serious note, if you could get bond issuance, what would be Plan C? This is all contingent.
Yep, Plan C would be, I would end up, in twenty twenty-one, we went to our, we went to our eight communities at the time, and we went to each town meeting and, and we got, you, some of you might recall in twenty twenty, we got an authorization for ten point five million dollars. And at the time, when I went to AdCom Select Board, basically the message was, we've been trying for several years with MSBA, but we can't do any more capital projects under, you know, in an annual assessment and expect y'all to fit it under your levy limit. We're going to have to have some bigger projects that are going to require us to take on debt and very likely lead to towns taking on debt. So if we had to do, like, if I had a roof issue and we needed to do some emergency preparations with roof, we'd start with patching it. But other than that ten point five million dollars, of which we didn't touch a penny because of Murphy's Law, six months later we get invited into MSBA. So our messaging was, if MSBA invites us in, we're not touching that money because we want the state to pay for as much as we can. So that's really, but, but again, even if we were to access that line, it would really be for just an extraordinary, it's not going to do, it's not going to do much, but it's going to, it would, it would be there, but it still has to be funded by the towns. So there aren't many clear Plan B paths that I think lead to someone saying there, the value that we're getting for the dollar is, is, it's penny-wise comp torsion.
Doctor, I think the big, uh, the winning point to, for every, all of my colleagues here to recall and reflect on is the hundred and eleven million dollar strong state, which he just took by thunder away. Then the only way we're going to get money back from the state, our money, right, we'll look at that way, is to proceed with a brand-new project like this that does move us into the future, which we're concerned about. It gives the dynamic for that, it gives us the dynamic to move more students through. I don't know what you feel, but I understand the trades. I know where we are right now in the marketplace for the trades. There is a shortage of trades, a growth shortage of trades, that's COVID before that even. And this seems to be a, to me, a hundred and eleven million dollars back from the state? Seems like a very efficient way to go, you know, business-wise, for, for this, for the towns and for, uh, my community.
Thanks. Thank you very, thank you for that. And, and can I answer any other questions?
Yeah. Another question, do you think, and that was a very, uh, we've heard different versions of this, that was great presentation. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, for all of us, we have to overlay this with when is the new elementary school bond hitting? And when is water treatment bond hitting? And how does that overlay with these numbers?
The elementary school is going to hit about the same time as that, though water treatment will hit in pieces.
You know, slow.
Yeah, we're, currently it's in at least three different clean water flushes. And the first one, I don't think will even hit until twenty-six or twenty-seven. So that's going to have a slow lockup.
So as a community, if we're talking about, you know, high watermark of a hundred and twenty here and here, and ninety, was it ninety-six for the school? I can't remember now. It's, it's a lot for our community, right? I don't, I agree with my colleague that the need is there, the building is there. You're in the same position that our elementary school is in.
Right. But at the time, the concurrent capital project, part of the, part of the modeling that we could talk about if the project is approved would be, you know, is it worth pushing some numbers out? We could bond, you know, we could stretch the bond anticipation notes, but when the market is steering in the face, we just want people to know that if the, if, if the market is favorable, we would want to be able to show people a range. Well, one of our earlier models was maybe pushing it out one more year. I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, when does old debt fall off? And there's a Plymouth County retirement assessment that's really choking the operating budgets of all municipalities and, so I, I do totally understand that this on an island on its own.
Makes sense.
Great. But now you piece it together with everything else, and we ask, we're asking residents to absorb the timing of having state funding and where, where does it fit? I, I totally understand.
As a follow-up, is there funding for educating public access? Because it's, it's going to be like, oh, yeah, it's another one, you know?
There's no direct funding, uh, other, we would make ourselves available, no, no direct sanction funding. Correct, correct, yeah.
And I mean, if we don't, if the town doesn't vote for the new school, you're still stuck paying for a hundred and forty million to bring stuff up to code, and that's going to hit at the same time. So I think to your point, if the difference is, you know, it's a hundred and twenty for a new school and it's a hundred for, you know, a piecemeal, then you're only talking twenty dollars, right?
What I, what I would say, I, I appreciate you condensing it like that. The one, the one forty, it, it depend, I don't know what an architect or a construction manager would come up with for a model, so it's not a, um, it might be delayed a year. It, it might take us longer. We have to figure out, could we come up with a cup? Would you want us coming back to voters in multiple successive years for, you know, chunks of millions of dollars? And, and, and the answer might be, yeah, come back every time and ask us again. Maybe, but, but I, but we do have an obligation to do those repairs, so I'm guessing they would say, figure out what you're going to do, piece it together, the procurement would be more cost-effective, but you'd end up having to do it in phases. But go and ask your communities for, for one Plan, for one Plan B. But I don't think it would be as quick as, it wouldn't be as quick as twenty-nine. It would just, it would be more expensive.
Is, is, you're going to come asking for the one sixty or the one twenty?
That is true.
And it's going to hit at the same time as our elementary school and our water thing. So then to me, in my mind, as a voter, I'm looking at, well, in the end, what's the best for my money? Getting a hundred and eleven million from the state and twenty dollars more a year from the new school, you know? Like, I mean, that's what I would say in my mind. So it might be important to Mark's point to kind of come up with some sort of value for that one forty, which you're basically going to be asking your voters, prepare one sixty, one forty.
Right. Pay now, pay later. What's the delta? What am I getting for?
Right.
New school, more students.
The, 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 we have to understand, see, though, there's already a weight loss. And the one forty, if, if you're telling a kid you want to, you want to go to H V A, sorry, you can't go home. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, it's almost criminal to tell that to a kid. Oh, you want to become an electrician? Sorry, just don't go.
I mean, why might someone want to change, give you a school, right?
Right. I mean, the Plan B is telling a kid, go home, see you later. And that, to me, has to be the message, because it's, it's absurd. At a public school, who would tell a child, no, don't learn what you want to do, even though we know that there's, that there's a need? Because you have to reduce the size, and I, and as you say, the, the financials, um, convert the same. convert the same, but go here, and that actually takes over the, the public.
Yeah, I think public education will be a big piece of this. Two that are in the community projects, how are they chosen? Are you quantifying the cost savings to the community on those of the cost avoidance? And then how are those distributed to the various communities?
We take the projects as they come. I have a, I have a community projects coordinator, we have an online application. The number one priority is doesn't match up with the program curriculum. If the carpentry shop is doing their 37th shed, we might want to bump that to the next year. But in general, we try to say yes as much as possible. So there's no rigid apportionment. Oftentimes, we'll get a just in time request for something. Sometimes there's a sense of urgency from a municipality. But no, we, we, we see it as just an on, we've not, we have not put a dollar cost on, on savings. It's more of a general goodwill return on investment. We fund the school that pays the teachers and buys the equipment and trains the kids to provide, you know, a great learning experience for the kids and, and something that, that benefits, that benefits the town.
So if there's a lineup with the curriculum, are you at all coordinating with like towns on their upcoming projects? And or is it just whatever the town asks for that does, doesn't line up?
We want to be responsive to town needs. There are times that we might reach out to communities and, and maybe there's different town leadership or there are certain departments. Sometimes it's not about town poll, it might be, oh, other departments didn't know that this wasn't, that this wasn't optional. So we do try to increase awareness. But I do believe at this point that nearly all, I mean, Marshfield being new might need a bit more of an orientation to it, but, but there certainly are opportunities there. And, and we, so it's, it's just, it's mutually beneficial and we don't, we haven't put a price tag on it.
The other question was around enrollment. So 2028 school openings, you're anticipating enrollment. Is that 900 then or you can do it?
Not like 800, 750.
No, I would say that if we, if we hover at 685 through the end of the 27, 28 school year. So now we're going into, we're going into fiscal 29 with 28, 29 school year. We just had the ribbon cutting ceremony somewhere in, somewhere in the summer. We will have, we typically accept kids as freshmen in December, January and February. We haven't had any town meetings to get an approved fiscal 29 budget. So when we open the door, if there are going to be more kids, it's because we've been able to calculate that with slightly larger shops, slightly larger classrooms and labs. We could incrementally increase. So could we increase the freshman classroom 180 to 200 for one year? Because we just have a little more breathing room? As long as I can do it with the existing staff, yes. But since I won't have an approved fiscal 29 budget when we're doing admissions, my message to the admissions office is, no, we're going to have to wait, we're going to have to wait here. Now to your point, right, so fast forward and ask the same question a year later? It depends on what we think the towns can afford. So if all of a sudden there's a vote for state aid that's going to offset us hiring English, math, science, social studies, bus driver custodian, parrot, I just don't see it right now. Maybe I just, we're living in the current squeeze that we're in right now. But we're going to push the envelope to the point that if the aid will supplement, then, then we would be more aggressive. But we've got to be a year behind because we can't bring in more kids and then say, well, sorry, we already said yes to those kids. Now, I don't think we'd be well received if we did that.
So you envision that, let's say fiscal year 30, school year 29, there's still a waitlist?
There will be a waitlist regardless. If we had an annual waitlist of 100 students, even if we could go to 900, we would still, there would still be a portion of a waitlist. MSBA's job is not to eliminate a waiting list, but it certainly would put a serious dent in it. So my, my, my vision would be to figure out where the spaces are needed. If we're going to take in more children, we have to start with academic staff. I need to look at vote teacher ratios. Probably we'll need to have three full-time vote teachers in each program. Make sure that's taken care of. And then I, then you have to look at the increased square footage. I'm going to have to hire more custodians, right? Whether I take in an extra kid or not. And so I have to make sure that I'm dealing with the maintenance piece as well right out of the gate. But absolutely, would we start to ask? Yes, but we need to know we have the capacity to do it. And then, and then we could very strategically move forward with it.
Okay.
Very strategically.
That to me feels like a similar version of, we're still saying no to kids. It's just not about specifically what they're interested in. It's just, we just don't have the room for it. So even though we built a new facility.
Yeah, we're saying not, we're saying not yet. It would be irresponsible for me to say we could go to 900 tomorrow.
When, 10 years?
Oh, I would, I would like to think less than that. And I would like to be able to draw our line and say, you know, five or, five or six years. Yeah, truly depends on where the economics, where the economic situation is. And I think I would be, it would be, I wouldn't be, I'd be disingenuous if I didn't say that, that, that yes. I, I would absolutely want to start by saying, hey, look, we've got more science left. I mean, I have every academic teacher sharing a classroom with a roommate. I mean, if you went into any of our academic classrooms right now, you would have two teachers at two separate desks and 24 chairs, 750 square foot classroom. Just having bigger classrooms would allow us a little bit more. So I do think I, I would, I will max out what we can bring in in year one as long as I can do it with the staffing I have in the 27, 28 school year. That's the only responsible answer I can give you. But after that, let's see where the state aid is. Because again, state aid should never drop. So if I see an increase in state aid, then I can begin to build forecasting models off the, off of that and try to do it as quickly as possible. And then call Mike Rowe and see if he's got an extra bedroom. Question from the.
John, can you maybe just enlighten everybody as to how the vote's going to work?
Sure, Frank.
The election, the, the vote coming up, just so we understand.
Yeah, so on Jan, on January 25th, from 9:00 and to 5:00 PM, folks in our nine towns have the option of voting in person or they can request an absentee ballot. And it's our responsibility as the school district to post an election warrant. In fact, last week, I, I did not know Sichewa had four post offices. I was going around putting up the election warrant. So if you go to your local post office, check that bulletin board, see if I did it right. We post the warrant, it's the 25th. By 6:00 PM on January 25th, we'll know what all, where all the yays and nays stand. Once that, if that's approved, then the next phase is we, we immediately begin in going into the design development phase. It's not a town specific vote, it's an aggregate vote. It's like we were electing our, our state representative.
But the vote is not asking for the, theoretically, we then have to go and have another election for the debt exclusion.
Right, and that is where I step away from the podium and it becomes a town conversation about what to do next.
But here's a question, what if?
You'd have to fit it under the levy limit. I know, if you're going to ask, what happens if the voters reject a debt exclusion on an approved project?
Correct.
You want to talk about where to put public education dollars, it's absolutely right there. Because unlike a local debt exclusion where the matter stops cold if the voters say no, this is a regional decision made by the region. And so it is absolutely incumbent upon, I take responsibility as well as town leadership to say, we're going to have to, whenever the timing is seen, I mean, some of these numbers may not, may not cause agita immediately, but there will have to be a, a, an increase in educating folks that at some point, these numbers will not fit under the levy limited order for you to maintain services of what you need in this zip code. And so that educational piece is, is absolutely going to, would absolutely be necessary.
So that's why I think we're going back to what Karen comments in the beginning is our challenge is to educate people to make sure they understand, in itself, in the vacuum. I can't imagine anybody opposing it. I'm just thinking there could be people that would oppose it based on the overall picture.
They're voting for the money and the school at the same time. Some people have a different vote, I think. Where they're just framing that, but you kind of are voting for both at the same time. But it's not, you're not really being expressed that information when you go to the vote.
Yes, we, we don't want to just focus on the pretty pictures. It's not a responsibility.
Well, I don't know that that message is out there. So I think if we, we could do it, that message has to go there that while this is yes, the yes vote for the project, no debt or, or money is included into this vote. However, that yes vote gives H2 an obligation for X amount of money.
That's correct.
And I don't know that that is going to be valid or anywhere else.
So along the side, so is there, and I'm sorry I came in a little late, but is there, there is a scenario then where the town doesn't authorize its obligation for the project?
If this vote is, if it's approved on January 25th, the towns are obligated. And so the, so that part under the statute is if the aggregate vote is yes and the, and the project is approved, then all of the towns will be obligated to cover their portion of it? The, the, the discretion at the town level is how would you like to fund it? And that's where the conversation is in terms of if it is not doing a debt exclusion, it would be under the levy limit and that is not sustainable at some point in the very near future. And that would be the messaging, I presume, from nearly all of our communities as to how that would get.
So just keep following that down a little bit. So is then the only, let's say for the taxpayer that doesn't want to spend whatever it is, is then the only obligation that the town decides not to participate in the region for the South Shore vote type?
Our regional agreement spells out what it might take if someone were to say, I don't want any more, I don't want any part of this entity. The requirements to leave the district are, they're, they're pretty intense because one community leaving would have an immediate adverse effect on the remaining communities. But part of the language in our regional agreement talks about still having financial obligations. I think what it boils down to is it would be extremely financially difficult to leave the region knowing that there are still financial obligations and then having no access to the building that the town might still be contributing to for, whether it might be a portion of debt share or OPEB costs or, or other. So there are, it's like there's a financial linkage. I, I haven't looked at the language in a while, but it is spelled out in, there's a whole section in our, in our charter in our regional agreement on what it would take. It's a two-year process. It would be an amendment to our regional agreement and six of the nine towns would need to vote to release a community that, that I can stay with confidence because it's an amendment, just like we brought in Marshfield, addition, subtraction, that, that would be the same process.
So once the vote gets passed, it seems like there is no, no scenario where the town is not obligated for its share of whatever the school.
That's correct. That's correct.
And an individual town itself could vote it down, but since it's an aggregate vote, so it could get shut out in Norwell and Sichewa, but Marshfield, Rockland, all those, some other towns that are in part of that nine towns that all over, like, you know, we have a large majority that will overtake our vote.
That's, that's correct. On, on a much, much, much smaller level, when we come to you with the annual budgets, where that of course is not by an aggregate vote, it's town specific. If six towns approve their assessment, all nine towns are obligated, even if one or, even if a minority of the towns voted down their assessment. So this is just a much larger scale of we're joined a region and there's an obligation.
Yeah, I just totally get it, thank you. I just hope that the people who are voting understand that too, because, you know, people say, oh, just Sichewa centric, people in Sichewa say, you know, we didn't vote for this. They're going to be very surprised, some could be that, oh, well, doesn't matter, we didn't vote for it. Everyone else.
That's right, as a region.
I just hope that it's getting socialized enough.
We're, we're, we're doing everything we can.
Great.
We go here, you go here.
I have a question for the chair. Have we discussed how we're financing this and when we're voting on this? I'll be working on that annual town meeting.
We have not, what, tonight?
Are we, no, we're doing this vote.
Tonight, we have the actual finance, the finance, no, we've not taken a vote on that or discussed it. It's not scheduled for next meeting.
Oh, we're not, we're going to start talking about it tonight?
Well, we have to, no, we're not, we, we have a plan A, we've got to get through. We're, we're throwing up every different scenario of what could go wrong and I understand that. But if we're, if folks are in agreement of trying to get this passed, we have to focus on the, on the 25th and understand really the financial, what it means. We're going to be obligated, it's going to put us in a lot more difficult spot. Like it will be making our job harder if there's not, if we don't have that discussion, that full discussion moving forward, but we're still obligated of what's going to happen. So that discussion, again, we're going to, we're going to be talking about it again after the 25th, once we know.
But Chris's point is, it doesn't matter if everyone in Sichewa folks know, we may still need to fund this.
Right.
So we should probably have the conversation now.
Yes, but like, right.
Which, so we should be working for that.
Yes, we, we have many different scenarios, right, folks? We have, it's like one to two to three. This thing could fail on the 25th. It could, right? It could be, you know, who knows?
A year out.
It could be a year out, so I mean.
I have a few more questions.
Oh, yeah. We're adhering to.
So, and my question actually is through a select board and all of these committees here. Are you guys going to come up with recommendations? Because I know the average citizen in town, you know, likes to hear from the advisory board, wants to hear from the select, wants to hear from capital planning. Can we do this? Is this something we can afford? So can we expect that before the 25th?
For?
Before the vote?
For what?
To get the opinion of these three groups as to where we should go as a, as a town.
At town meeting, usually there's some recommendation from advisory or capital planning or the select board. So I guess that's the question, will there be that endorsement or, or not, depending on how you feel about it before the vote on the 25th?
That's what we're doing tonight.
That's what we're doing tonight, we're making the, yeah.
And then there'll be a.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to the other two, but I know we'll be taking a vote as the select board. Or are we?
And then we'll present that at town meeting.
I guess, I guess we're getting two different, I guess.
I have a couple more questions. So this is the only design, right? There's no others, limited, smaller, smaller scope of work. So maybe along the lines of what somebody had said earlier. So say, for example, like, why do you need to have all these sports facilities when you're taking 40 kids from a district? Why couldn't they just go participate in all those local districts and have a, have a scope of work that is 30% less expensive? So this is the only plan, I guess, is my question, right?
We took, we, we went through the normal schematic process, but we looked at, we looked at multiple adrenol options. We looked at multiple new designs. We looked at multiple enrollments as well, so. But this is, we, we can only bring one design to MSBA for their approval. And so when we looked at that, part of our calculus was the, the dollar amount for lower, slightly lower enrollments was, I'll give you an example. We could have built a school for a maximum enrollment of 800 students. It would have been about $4 million less. Our building committee came to the conclusion that that delta for 100 additional students was not, was not a reason, to add an additional 100 students seemed too, was certainly too close. We could have designed it for up to 975 through the MSBA. We also stayed away from that number. A lot of that having to do with just sustainability on the site and, and additional operating costs and space. So we went through that process, looking at adrenol and new options. And we arrived, we arrived at this, you know, this valued sweet spot between being able to, asking our communities for funding for the next 50 years for vote ed. And part of our calculation was to say, if we were just doing a lateral move, knowing that there's a chronic waiting list issue, we would expect criticism for that as well. That part of the, part of the, part of me, us throwing money into the kitty to pay for this is we should be able to give more kids more access. And the towns that want more access will ultimately pay a larger share of the cost. And that is part of what that regional agreement of men was attempting to address. That over the next three decades, if there are fluctuations in enrollment, it should be, that, that should follow what a town's share would, would be. But to back to your original question, we did have multiple thoughts that came down to this design.
All right, so, so can you keep me on like these dollars and cents? So our obligation, if I said it, is 59 kids out of 680, is it roughly 10% of the budget, more or less?
Yeah, I, I would project Sichewa's enrollment doing the, using the formula would probably be. doing the, using the formula, would probably be in the, I'm going to up it a bit and say, you know, probably an eight-and-a-half percent range over time. That's, I've looked very carefully at trends. I'm projecting that Citewood would almost always fill their seats. I'm going to keep that in the current mode. But when we calculate these numbers, we need to come up with an enrollment share. So, that's what I've been looking, been looking at. But you're not that far off, yeah, and, but it could be, it could be.
So, our share is like eight-and-a-half percent of 160 million?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a reasonable way of putting it.
For $12 million or something to that effect.
Yeah, and I could certainly, we're going to be posting more detailed tax impact information, but, but yeah, I'd say that's, that's reasonable if you want it, if you want it. We, at some point, when we were doing these projections, it makes no sense to make annual tweaks with numbers. What I was looking at is, look at the current enrollment we have, grades nine, 10, 11, 12. Factor in about 3.5% attrition as, you know, we bring in 180 kids, we graduate about 160. Look where the trends are, assume, make a few assumptions. Marshfield's kind of brand new, but they'll probably send 30 kids a year. Let's make, let's pretend everyone's staying in their lane, oversubscribed, unsubscribed. I think we're going to have about 30 unused seats each year for the next three years until we're able to open this. So, by the time we get to '28, '29, I can, I feel confident being in the same size building, certainly. But at some point, for the sake of doing these numbers, we have to kind of throw an educated dart at it. And I think that, I think that that's close to what we're doing.
So, one of the trends, though, that I see in Citewood is that our high school enrollment's gone down by about 200 kids in the last four, five years.
Yeah, okay.
So, I suspect that some of the other towns have the same kinds of trends. And so, here we are, we, and 59 of our kids of that reduction has gone to VOTAC. So, we're going to spend $12 million for the capacity of high school kids that we have access of to send to Citewood VOTAC or South Shore VOTAC. So, it just seems like we have an infrastructure in our town, which I think is in other towns, that is underutilized. And we're spending on a dollar per kid a lot more for those 59 kids to send them to VOTAC. Now, I understand that there are differences in curriculum and all the rest of it, which brings me to some of the other questions I asked, but there doesn't seem to be any kind of coordination of things that all these towns have that you don't necessarily have to offer. But we all want what you want to have to offer, which is these kinds of technical educations. And, you know, just a general comment, you know, we're spending more per kid for these 59 kids to go to this...
And it is 59 kids. It could be more, it could be less, and it's going to be, of course, over time.
And that's why I asked the question on the, 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 kind of the rough idea of what are 8.5%, 10%, whatever that allocation is, is in an agreement amongst the South Shore communities.
Yeah, it really depends on how, how seats are allotted and how many are used. If there is a trend downward and we see fewer Citewood kids, we would see a trend downward in the debt share. One of the things that I, one of the things that I've noticed over the years is that with our nine communities, that there, it's almost the reason that Citewood helped form this place in 1960, which is, there's no duplication of effort. There aren't concurrent programs running. You can't, you can't have automotive shops in a whole bunch of different schools. So, I think that does lend itself to saying, this is specialized education. It should be regionalized. It should be cost shared. And then, yes, over time, there may be times where a town sends a lot of kids, has a large, has a larger share, and then it does adjust over time. Good, thank you, sure.
Kind of a general question, sort of deepens out what everybody said here. Do you not think voters kind of feel like we have an obligation to have this kind of education available for it? Isn't it just great for it?
I don't hear anybody say that vocational education is unimportant. I think that there's a, it's never been more popular as a form of education. I think people appreciate our attempts to extend the useful life of the building. But I do think, I do think to Dan's point that people also need to know where does this fit in the, like, is it this or nothing? And the messaging is, there will have to be repairs and how do we bundle it? But I, I do feel that people also, at a thousand-foot level, whether they care about the manufacturing shop or not, they do see this as continued reasonable investment, a necessary investment in, in, in public education, certainly. But most folks, as I said at the beginning, have no complaints about our mission. They just need to see where this, where this impact fits. And it, yeah, so, I mean, in talking to folks from nine towns, I see, I see some, some common themes. Regardless of the zip code, I'm in.
No, I just, to your point, I think if this, if everyone in this room, if we collectively agree that this is the path we want to pursue, we have, we have the local paper, so we have an obligation, to your point, to let people know what we're asking them to consider on the 25th. It's not that much time. But it will be incumbent on all of us to get that message out should, should it pass tonight. So, good point, thank you.
Can I just, Mr. Chairman? Just remind, and I respect your analysis of the costs, the 8%, 10%, that back and forth. I just want to remind everybody about the $111 million going this way versus the $140 million with no $111 million going the other way. It just makes sense. And to your point, Patrice, this is a form of education that our society needs, our general society. We often think of ourselves a lot, but you think about, I mean, I'm in the trades. I was down in New York City last week looking at a disaster, about a $500 square foot build out because the floor covering installer, one of my expertises, screwed the whole thing up, right across looking at the Plaza Hotel. We need this. Society needs it, whether it's for your own home or whether for, it's for commercial construction. We need to improve the kids going through this so they can help the betterment of society in business and for your own residences. So, ultimately, this is the way to go. It's the future. It really is.
So, respectfully, completely agree with you, but it's not a foregone conclusion that we're spending $140 million if we don't spend $160, too.
It's inevitable that you were going to have to run and make that vote respectfully. And you might do it in chunks.
We still want to go through this entire process, so...
But you're not going to get any money from the MSBA.
Jamie, I completely agree with you, but it is ingenuous to tell voters that if you don't approve this to get the $111 from the state, that we're spending $140. That's, that's not accurate.
You're going to spend someplace. You're going to spend a whole time.
Not a $140 bill.
But that, that would be a new, definitely a new proposal that not, let's go for that, I guess.
It's not an automatic, it's not an automatic trigger.
How long have you worked on this, trying to get this across the finish line?
Well, I mean, we certainly, as we applied, started, well, two years since we were invited, but 2015, we started applying statement of interest, probably similar.
2015?
No one here disagrees, but...
No, I just want people to know. It's going to take forever.
Talking about the money. And we need to be honest with everyone about what it costs, where we're going to find the money. And it's not a foregone conclusion that we're spending any debt on this school. That's not accurate.
You won't know that until, until...
Well, here's the thing, well, I, we also understand, too, we do have some time, so to clarify one of the points, too, about the four town meeting. We have time to figure that, to figure some of this out, exactly what might be the right... I do not foresee, I could be wrong, I do not foresee that there will be an override in Citewood on the ballot for this year, for this upcoming town meeting, right?
An override or a debt exclusion for this part of, between time and...
The, debt exclusion for FY, for this year. May or may not.
I think we could afford what they're talking about in floor term interest within the operational budget.
Exactly. So, that's why some of this, we have to exactly examine why and what those different scenarios are to make sure what's the proper timing. Is it going to be this year, whatever that is? And I think I was a little bit short on exactly when. So, that's why we have some of that time to figure out what is, because this is, this is a big impact for all these different projects that we have. You know, how do we, it's a pain point for a lot of folks. So, how do, if it's going to go forward, how do we make sure that it's not, you know, impacting, but we're doing it in a way that's, that's feasible?
So, the vote tonight is to approve a project. Approve a project. Make numbers, and then we'll figure out later how we're planning that.
But we'll be obligated.
But we're obligated.
Right.
Yes.
The money for this project, we want to do it through... We'll, we'll be able to define it, we'll open it.
No, the numbers we know, it's how, we get to choose how we want to finance it. We can, we can sell, I don't know, sell the store. I don't know, whatever, I'm making that, like, whatever. There's, we have to figure out a way for us to fund it. We have to fix the, we have to fix the obligation. We're saying, yes, we want to be part of this or not. And now it's up to our town to say, how are you going to fund it?
And even if it doesn't pass, what's going to happen?
In Citewood, correct. Entire program, 50 plus one.
And our job, like, these are reasonable expectations based on reasonable assumptions of a normal financing.
Correct.
Our job is to sit down and look in the mattress and, you know, figure out how do we, I would suggest that our job is to find how do we keep that number as low as possible or spread it out so the impact is less painful with all of our obligations. And that will take a lot of time internally, but we're, we're thinking it is. We'll have to figure that out, and it will be our obligation, but we have, we collectively get to make those choices.
To be clear, the costs are pro-rata based on students. So, although we are not filling our seats currently, you know, this is not, we had five empty seats that we did not fill this year, correct?
We, there was an increase of five students. I think it's, I think it's close to that.
We did not fill all the allocated seats. So, at least the pro-rata costs, that will go down for us, I believe. But this is on us to, I'm a big advocate of trade schools, too. We're not filling the current seats that we're allotted. So, there's a number that we're still responsible for, even if we have less kids going.
Right, I assume this is...
You're going to try to, you're going to waitlist, right?
No, 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 it's based on enrollment.
Did you not change that it's an average?
It's a rolling average. Is it a four-year enrollment?
Hold on, hold on.
Right.
One, one person at a time. Hold on.
Is there anything on the four-year?
Yes, clarity on four-year.
The debt exclusion is the same as our per student. It's a rolling four-year average. Is that...
That's right. Debt share would be adjusted annually during a four-year lookback on enrollment. Seats are full, seats are not full, oversubscribed. We grab another data set, we factor it in so that it will, we'll always be able to calculate a, a, a debt share based on, based on that. So, fewer students, lower debt share, factored into the formula.
Right, but it's not going to go like this every year.
And that's why we opted for a four-year rolling average to allow, to, to be able to manage that volatility somewhat, not being able to entirely predict where each year would go. Frank, and then...
So, the other part that this is addressing, you're talking about maybe a lack of enrollment from a town like Citewood or Cohasset, but you're also adding additional programs that the schools vetted through various areas to find areas that they believe more students will apply to. So, my, my thought is that you're going to see an increase from all these towns. Now, you're going to have veterinary medicine. You can rattle them off further than I can. But you're going to have brand-new shops with brand-new programs, and you're going to see additional interest enrollment, applications because of that.
Citewood's enrollment has doubled in the last four years. It's not a guarantee, you know, past is not, that's our prologue, so we're not... But we do think that with new program, I think, we think with veterinary science, there may be students out there who, that might be the only program that they would want to apply for, so there may be a subset of students, certainly. The other fact I just want to mention, which is not a headliner, but there is also the potential to expand our district. I know that I've had, I've had several communications from the town of Pembroke wanting to ask what it would take to join the district, which is a double-edged sword depending on one's feelings on allocation of seats because you can bring in another community to help cost share, and with that, you reap, you reap a portion of seats. That's something that might be for consideration in the future, but really shouldn't have any fear on what we're talking about. And, and Mr. Chair, if I may just, just to go back, I'm sorry, is it, is it Mike? I just want to emphasize his point about it's not, it's not a guarantee on the 140. That's, that's absolutely true. You have to go back and, the project team has anticipated what would likely be a bundle that would come back in front, in front of voters. So, that is accurate.
To that point, we say the numbers are out there. We know the numbers. We know the numbers. We just went through this with the water treatment plant. These numbers are estimates. They're not what we're going to be paying. We all, we all know that. So, we're saying, and we're going to have the town to them and say, okay, you're seeing 160. If the numbers come back in there more than that, what will you just want to do around town? It's going to be a disaster. I'm all for this. I think this is amazing. Don't take it one way, just, I think that, hooking, like, when we say, yes, we're attaching ourselves to a number that we don't even know, you know, it's like taking handcuffs to a taxi with a leader on it. You don't know. Maybe it's not, it could actually be possible, really.
Can I just say something? Michael, let me respectfully clarify the point. When he's making a presentation of replacing and upgrading a 1962 worn-out building to a new building, and he shows us his, his full budget and the MSBCA, MSBA donation, the next thing to do in a presentation like that is to show what would happen if we didn't do it that way for the same value of what he's got. Because that's the question here. I wasn't trying to say we were going to go spend $140 million right away. But basically, to show in comparison, value to value, if we're going to renovate this building versus building a new one, that's the values from one to the other. It does make financial sense to look at it that way to know the, the real value of what you're thinking by moving to a new project. That's all I'm saying.
We're talking about alternatives. The, the way you presented to voters, though, this is the number, that is a reasonable alternative, but it's not the one for one.
Correct, it's not. It's value for value. It's to say, okay, if we don't do anything to make this thing up to sn, up to code, to make this building up to code, we're eventually going to have to reduce the number of kids and not improve anything except make it up to code. And you're looking at, over the course of years, maybe $140 million. That's what you're saying.
That's correct. And we keep saying $140, but again, the town share total is what, 12, 12 to 14? We, all, every one of those committees spent $9 million on locker rooms in the high school. Nobody added an I. Town meeting spent $2 million on two empty fields that are still sitting out there. And again, we're talking about $14 million over 30 years. Again, to reduce the waitlist from 75 to 100 kids. For, for things that are happening that know that the state is saying this is going to be the, the labor market. So, yep, it's your good way of looking at it. And that, Mike, I know.
Now, tonight was supposed to be an informational meeting for, for the three boards, is what I suspected. And, and certainly would have been given a tremendous amount of information. And I thought that the purpose then was for each of the respective boards to take a vote themselves so that they would recommend. As Karen said, we need to get the information out of each of the boards, too. So, I mean, my thought is that the board, each individual board, after they've taken their vote, whether, yes, we think this is a good idea for voters, you know, yes, then they would put that out there. Voters may certainly have questions about it, and then they would contact the people individually or as a group, and then you would kind of answer the questions. But I thought that's what this, the purpose of this was tonight, But I thought that's what this, the purpose of this was tonight, was to be able to, each board say yes or no, and then be able to put that online or, or any type of digital media so that people, well.
To, to that point, if, if there's no town meeting, what would be, what would you feel, or you guys feel like the best way to process some of that, that information, too? I've often felt the town website is underutilized and it's a great website.
Dan, listen, we're not the, I get, I know, I mean, there is no local media, we're not the media, we can only do our job, we can't report on ourselves doing the job. Okay, so we love to, and we guys get any information out, I mean.
No, I'm, 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 you want, you want to talk to her, she just said you could let us know, I was asking her, do you want us, again, do you want to, you know, do, how do they wanna find out?
Yeah, what's, what's the destiny?
That's, yeah, we'll finish this one.
All right, I had gone to the meetings that, that Superintendent Hinkie had put on at the library, and I will say, I am totally in favor of this, I, I had been a member of, I was Situitt School Committee member for twelve years, starting in the nineties. Superintendent Hinkie came as a fresh-faced graduate of Boston College, and he's been here for thirteen years. And after that meeting, I, I hate to say that all the information has to be on social media, but it is the only thing. Situitt Monthly has sixteen thousand members, Situitt Connect has thirteen thousand members. People read it, they may not comment, but they read it. And so after that meeting, I did put, I did put something out there on Situitt Monthly, which got tons and tons of reactions, all positive, every single one was positive. And I think at this point, because it is January twenty-fifth, that is the way to go. And I, I know Karen's close, speaking as a board member, so I don't know how any or each of you want to do it collectively, but I think that that, because we have no more narrative, I still get a paper copy of the ledger, I don't know why. And so.
It's got, it's got a great crossword.
Oh, yeah, but anyways, that's my.
Mike, sorry, I cut you off, another thing. Mike, do you wanna say something before?
Yeah, I mean, if we wanna keep talking, I have public segments, I think we can, if we wanna talk about the money, I mean, I think there's, we have Situitt Community TV, and email service, we have, we have all these, we have four channels, that would vote, anyways. I think the argument that we spent money poorly in the past is not a good reason why let's just spend money now. Because everyone in town wants to know how much this is gonna cost, and we're talking about a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty, or ninety-two, if we do level debt, add it onto our other projects, the average home's looking at about a thousand bucks a year for debt exclusions. We need to be upfront with everyone about that, what we're gonna vote on.
And that's, and that's, and that's what, kind of where I'm stuck here. Put, put it out there, is the phrase that was used, that's not how we operate. Usually, there's a town meeting, advisory, for instance, writes a booklet, we put the pros and cons in there, we say, well, we voted, you guys get up and talk, we say, why you voted, yeah, Capitol does the same thing. There's no forum for that with this type of vote. So I just wanna get some clarity on where we think we're gonna go forward to get this information out to taxpayers, the thing we all agree, that people need to understand it as part of a whole and not just, and I also am very much in favor of this, I think it's terrific, I think it's a bargain, but we need to be able to make sure that everybody understands it.
So going forward here tonight, I mean, I think we get it out on social media, town should be putting it out like we put out in the advisory booklet, but as far as any vote goes, I think we take separate votes, like we always have. And so are we now at that point, or are we gonna keep, you know, because we've never, I mean, we've never sat with Capitol planning and discussed something, you know, like we vote on, they, they come in with their thing, and we listen or whatever, and you guys do your own thing, we do our own thing, so I think we're, are we at that point now where we can move this way forward and separate and vote, or?
We can vote, there's a.
Did you just, do you wanna? What? Did you just move it up?
We don't question, we don't.
Sorry, sorry.
Where does that bourbon? Well, I was trying to, I mean, I was trying to let it breathe, but I'm trying to get my, so I'd be.
The other committees can have other meetings. Right. I don't know what their process is, but I'm comfortable taking about that for, for our, also think we are meeting next week, we can, we can discuss how we're gonna communicate next week.
Yeah, I'm not getting told, jerkface out of operating, so there's nothing.
Talk about it.
Right, I'm, I mean, you can decide, you can question on our particular board tonight, if you feel that our.
I'd love to make the motion if you want to.
And then put it on the agenda for the.
I'll hear a motion.
Depending if we, you know, all support it or not.
I'd make the motion, the select board move to, move, the select board vote to support the South Shore Regional Vocational School District's January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five district-wide ballot question to authorize two hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and eight dollars for a new district school.
Move, move, so go, we're seconded by Ms. Harrison, any other comments on our board? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you have us.
So we've done that part.
So, well, you gotta do all the marketing, the special boards don't want to.
Well, I propose we talk about outreach, or we're meeting, I would.
Yeah, we need to outreach. And I think, and Dr. I'm sure you are doing what you're gonna do to educate all the districts.
If, if I may say that of the, of our nine towns, what, what you're convening tonight is, is unique in terms of bringing multiple boards together for a conversation. I appreciate the conversation around outreach, and I would be more than happy to partner with any board, or in any forum, to help with that outreach. Certainly, Situitt TV, other, other, other venues, places in town where people gather, that, that's generally been the dance card I've been looking to fill for myself for the last few months, that we do wanna get that information out. And I appreciate you being so attentive to this presentation and allowing us to get into the weeds on this, because this, this does deserve to be part of the conversation. So yes, I'm, just tell me where I need to go, I don't mean it that way, but you know what I mean.
Assuming you probably have a form with this one. Yes, so, so we're on board, I mean, I think we're all to adjourn, we have a motion. I don't know if you guys are gonna vote or anything. We're waiting for next meeting, or?
Yeah, we have a meeting Thursday, we'll probably do that.
Yes.
We're gonna.
For a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, seconded by the scandal, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, adjourn, adjourn, we're adjourned.
Somebody have to be on the meditators here. Maybe you took a vote.
To move the vote to adjourn.
And then you took a vote to adjourn, and then they took a vote to adjourn, and just the two lovely speakers in the audience, four of you. Your hands have been beautiful, but I just don't know where you are.
Brian Poitras, sixty-six lots, and we're up Brian Poitras.